Good evening, and thank you for joining us for tonight's San Anselmo Town Council Candidate Forum. I'm Judy Baldessari. I'm a member of the League of Women Voters of Marin County. Tonight's event is being moderated by the Marin League. In 2020, the League of Women Voters will celebrate 100 years of following a mission to empower voters and defend democracy. Hosting and moderating candidate forums is an important part of our vision of a democracy where every citizen has the desire, the right, the information, and the confidence to participate. The League of Women Voters is a strictly nonpartisan organization and never supports or opposes individual candidates or political parties. We encourage our audience to submit questions on the index cards you find on your seats. Someone will be along to collect them during the course of the evening. Before we get started, I ask you to please turn off any devices that make noise. And now, I hand you over to your moderator for this evening, Susan Stomp.
Thank you. Hello, and welcome to this candidate forum sponsored by the League of Women Voters of Marin County. I'm Susan Stomp of the League of Women Voters of Marin County, and I'll be your moderator. With me are League members Lisa Bennett, who will be timekeeper, and Nancy Bell, who will be a question sorter. There are four candidates running for two seats on the San Anselmo Town Council. All of the candidates are with us tonight. They are Steve Burdo, Ford Green, Tom King, and Kim Pipkin. Before we get started, a quick review of the ground rules. Because we are strictly a nonpartisan organization and follow the Federal Election Commission rules for candidate forums, no campaign material, including buttons, signs, brochures, t-shirts, et cetera, is permitted in the auditorium. However, campaign brochures may be, with our permission, placed on a table in the entryway after the forum has concluded. Most importantly, we expect candidates and audience members to remain civil and courteous throughout the meeting. What we are requesting is that the audience will not make or yell comments or applaud individual candidate answers. Let's use this evening as an opportunity to listen to and learn from all of the candidates. Please note that CMCM is recording tonight's forum. Due to the power outage, tonight's forum will not be broadcast live. A gavel-to-gavel production will be broadcast on CMCM's Channel 30, as well as on the League's website at www.marinlwv.org. Audience release notices are posted around the room advising you that your presence as a member of the audience during the filming constitutes your permission for the League of Women Voters of Marin County to use your likeness on the air in any form and as often as they deem appropriate and desirable for promotional or broadcast purposes. Each candidate has been invited to make a two-minute opening statement. We'll begin with Steve Burdo and go down the row in the order in which they're seated. After that, the candidates will have a one and a half minute to answer each question, and to be fair, we will rotate the question answering between the candidates. But we'll start now with Steve Burdo and your two-minute opening statement.
Thank you. Thank you to the League of Women Voters. Thank you to everybody for being here tonight, or those of you watching at home. Thank you to my fellow candidates. My name is Steve Burdo, and I'm running for San Anselmo Town Council to ensure that our community remains vibrant, family-friendly, and safe. My parents instilled in me the spirit of volunteerism. The rule was, in our household, if you lived in a community, you had to volunteer in that community. In that spirit, I've been actively engaged in our community for over a decade as a member of the Parks and Recreation Commission, a member of the Memorial Park Master Plan Advisory Board, and a member of the Community Facilities Master Plan Advisory Committee, among others. I helped lead community cleanup days, efforts to paint the Isabel Cook Center, and stain the playscape at the Millennium Playground. I'm a Public Information Officer for a local county and the only candidate in this race with public safety experience, having served during the 2017 North Bay fires and numerous other emergency services deployments. I'm endorsed by every single organization that has made an endorsement in this race, including the Marin County Firefighters, the Sierra Club, the Marin Association of Realtors, and being the only candidate endorsed by the Marin Independent Journal and the Marin Democratic Party. I look forward to our discussion tonight, and I hope that afterwards you feel that I'm a candidate that you would deem worthy of voting for. Thank you.
Thank you. Ford?
Wow, that was under a minute and a half. Thank you very much to the League for providing this opportunity to engage in... Whoops, I should know better. Thank you to the League for this opportunity to engage in First Amendment-protected activity. The First Amendment provides a lifeblood for our democracy, and that includes speech and press. This is being recorded by CMCM and will be broadcast by it. That's one of the organizations that I'm a member of the Board of Directors of. My name is Ford Green. I am a lifelong native of California. I have lived in San Anselmo for 39 years, the last 12 of which have been on the San Anselmo Town Council. I come from four generations here in the Ross Valley. Natalie Coffin Green Park at the Phoenix Lake Sanctuary is named after my grandma, and I paid five bucks for my allowance when I was 10 years old to help pay for that sign. I do a lot of endurance biking, and the reason I bring that up is because what I've learned in that, that it's very difficult, and you have to learn how to ride within yourself. If you don't do that, you blow up. You have to learn how to ride your own ride, and that's something that I've been doing here in San Anselmo for 12 years. I am the longest board member on Marin Clean Energy, and what that provides is a reinforcement of making carbon-free electricity. That provides the opportunity also for us to be able to use electricity that is carbon-free. I'm also sit on the fireboard. We have recently had an assessment. We don't have enough guys on the fire engine. We don't have enough money in San Anselmo to pay, and I propose recreational cannabis proceeds to pay for more firefighters. Thank you.
Thank you. Tom King?
Thank you all for coming tonight, and to the League of Women Voters for hosting. As an aside, I think our country has gone severely downhill since the League no longer hosts presidential debates. Recently, one of our longtime incumbents announced her resignation, ironically probably from the same chair. In doing so, she urged the council to appoint a woman. Right from the start, I think the council was focused on appointing the next council member and not having the 13,000 residents of San Anselmo make this democratic decision. When the government takes our vote, there is no democracy. I'm especially disappointed, and respectfully so, with Ford Green. I agree with Ford in many areas professionally, especially his take against cults like Scientology and the Moonies, environmental issues, et cetera. But when Ford first ran for council, he lost and was the runner-up. A year later, an incumbent resigned. He naturally thought he should be chosen to fill the seat, and I agree 100%. But the council chose someone else, someone who did not run as a candidate in the last election. Ford was quoted as saying, "It's a done deal," meaning the appointment process. Fast forward to the present, the situation is identical. An incumbent resigns, the council appoints someone else, but not the runner-up in the last election. Yet this time Ford, as an incumbent, votes to appoint this person, not pick the runner-up in the last election. In his candidate statement, he writes that he fights for fairness and democratic process. I don't know how the appointment of our newest council member is either fair or democratic. "I won't pick and choose when to support or not support democracy. With me, democracy will always win. The residents of our town are sick and tired of political maneuvering and inside deals. They just want to be treated with the respect they deserve. They want democracy. One person, one vote." Time permitting tonight, and in my closing statement, I will provide an overview of my ideas, a revolution in seven steps. Please vote for me, as I will always be transparent, accessible, fair, and democratic. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Kim Pipkin.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for having me tonight. I wanted to acknowledge that this is National Breast Cancer Month, and subsequently, we should honor all those people who actually have relatives, friends, or have personally experienced that. Again, my name is Kim Pipkin, and I thank you for being here tonight. I am a Hoosier by birth, and when I was a little girl, I actually had a paper route, and I got up early in the morning to throw the Indianapolis Star, and I threw the Indianapolis Evening Paper, the news, and that was sort of my first foray into making money and being a community member. I'm running for town council to bring a new, fresh voice to our community, and I want to ensure that San Anselmo remains a great place to live, play, and work. I believe we have the chance to meaningfully address our challenges and take advantage of the best of our opportunities. However, San Anselmo needs experienced leadership with an understanding of our local community and values in order to shape our future. As a former planning commissioner, and I'm very comfortable in this room, by the way, I actually have a name tag somewhere back there, it was important for me to hold myself to high standards while paying attention to what people felt was important to them. I pride myself on being credible, able, and ethical, and having the skills needed to help our community. Diversity of thought, new ideas, and integrity is what I believe we need to achieve positive results for our town. I have been endorsed by Kay Coleman, former mayor, Doug Kelly, vice mayor, young Democrats, Marin professional firefighters, North Bay Labor Council, and the Marin Women's PAC. I would really be honored to have your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. And now the questions. We'll begin with Ford Green. What are your top priorities for San Anselmo?
My top priority for San Anselmo is fire protection. All of us know that sooner or later, that we're not going to get a pass forever. Communities up and down the state have been subject to firestorms that are just a whole new kind of risk. Part of dealing with fires is being able to have an effective response. Recently, San Anselmo had an assessment that came up critical because we don't have an effective number of firefighters on each one of our engines. I want to pay for more firefighters so that we have a better response. And my proposal is that what we do is that we license recreational cannabis on a storefront basis and enter into agreements that will, or an agreement, not more than one, but one, enter into an agreement that will bring as much as $400,000 a year to the town, and for the three firefighters we need, the amount is about $490,000. So it would bring us very close to what we need. Additionally, in town, I would continue to support honesty in dealing with our citizens and accountabilities by staff and people on the town council.
Thank you. Tom King?
Well, thank you. My main focus is democracy, so you'll find it at the end of the meeting, on the back of my postcard.
Pardon me. Thank you. I'm glad we have him back here. Let me start again. My main focus is on democracy. I have a revolution in seven steps on my website, tomking2019.com. I urge you all to go there. The first is to make the town council a paid full-time position with the council serving only one term. I think this is the most critical step we can do. Right now, to apply for this job, you either have to have a lot of money or a lot of time. That leaves out about 85% of the populace. It's considered essentially a volunteer job. I think it's way too critical. We have 13,000 people with a wide dispersed view of needs and concerns, and I think it should be a paid job full-time. I think the offices should be here. I think we should see our council members all the time, and this will solve that problem. Everyone can apply for the job. I also think it should serve one term only. This will avoid long-term cost to the town. There'll be no retirement accrual benefits for a four-year term, and that's the most critical step. And other questions later tonight, I can see my time expiring, but in other questions tonight, I'll get to the other ones. But that's probably the most important one for me.
Thank you. Kim?
I actually have several priorities, but I'll give you the four top ones for me. Prioritization of public safety, health and wellness in all its facets. The public safety component includes flood, which everybody is fully aware of, and particularly now, we're very concerned about fire. I was involved in the Oakland Fire, so I'm personally not traumatized, but I understand the depth and the breadth of what that means. And health and wellness matters to me because I have a 19-year-old daughter who unfortunately had to come home from college because she had been vaping, and she has some severe upper respiratory problems. And this is a challenge in our town with teens, and this is a big concern for me. Another one is I want to make sure that we're attracting quality businesses that are aligned with our values. I am not an advocate of having a retail cannabis store here. I am okay with responsible adult consumption and use, but not to have a retail store. Third is support our youth, older adults, and the underrepresented. And last, I want to be able to create age-friendly housing options to meet differing needs.
Thank you. Steve?
For my top three priorities, the first one is public safety, and that includes fire protection and prevention, flood mitigation, and other emergencies that we would see. As I mentioned, I worked during the 2017 North Bay fires, and for the last 48 hours, I've been working in the Contra Costa County Emergency Operations Center on the planned power shutdown that we're experiencing in the state. This is a power shutdown that we are working, we've opened a full EOC and are working no less than if there was a full fire. This is the brave new world we live in. We need to make sure that our community is educated and that we're planning and preparing well and are ready for an emergency. My second priority would be infrastructure, our roads, our parks, our facilities. This is what makes San Anselmo strong when there is an emergency. Are our roads able to accommodate the use? Are our facilities able to be used as shelters? And on a day-to-day basis, are our parks able to be used, and are our facilities able to be used and accommodate the future use for our community? That's something that I'm very, very high on. And finally, programs and support for our youth, teens, and the elder members of our community. We have a great opportunity here in town to produce good programming for all of those demographics and make sure that we're a town inclusive of all populations. Age Friendly Marin is currently doing a study, and we can leverage those results into better programming. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we get to the next question, I would like the audience to be aware that there are index cards and pencils on the seats, and if you would like to submit a question for the candidates, just write it out in the card and raise it up, and somebody will pick it up for you. So the next question will be answered by Tom first, and the question is, "Do you think creating affordable housing is a benefit to your community? Why or why not?"
Thank you. On the one hand, when I hear the term affordable housing, it's a bit strange. I hear it in Marin and San Francisco quite often. It's as if we're all in the desert, and affordable housing is this great mirage that we can't see in the distance. We are in control of affordable housing, not realtors. It's your decision, if you've lived here for 20 or 30 years, to sell your home at the price as you are. There's no market value. My mother sold her home for about 60% of its value. Any realtors in the room in San Anselmo, that's not a long shot, there's probably someone here, but any realtors might think that's not human nature, but she was the most human and humane person I've ever known. The reason she did that is because the couple that came and looked at her home, our home, reminded her of her and my dad when they were young, struggling, and they built the neighborhood up, and it was a great decision. So affordable housing is, on a commercial and residential level, a decision that we're all making. The landlords here downtown are making the decision to raise rents. My landlord, and perhaps Steve's as well, Steve and I are both renters, are raising rents as well. So affordable housing in that sense is a bit strange. Now governmental affordable housing, no, I'm not in support of because I don't think it's fair. They do a lottery system, and I don't think it's fair for someone who's been here for 20 or 30 years not to get picked with someone who might be here just a few months. Thank you.
Thank you. Kim?
I have a background in commercial architecture and construction, and that includes understanding what the housing issues are in the Bay Area. Affordable is sort of an interesting word because it's all relative. I mean, some of us might want to live in Pack Heights, and I can't afford to live there. So I'd like to use other terms, but more important to me is typically affordable means that you're below the median income, and I'm not entirely sure who here is, but I know that there are lots of people who are. What I would really like to see happen is a variety of housing. San Anselmo doesn't have a lot of actual parcels of land that we could use for affordable housing, but we can, and it's right here downtown. Mostly, I'm in favor of transit-oriented development, where people don't have to rely on cars. And again, there's a variety of needs that people have. So let's say you used to have a three-bedroom, one-bath house, or a three-bedroom, three-bath house. Maybe now you want to have a one-bedroom, one-bath. So I want to do some rezoning and really think about transit-oriented development downtown.
Thank you. Steve?
Yeah, I think affordable housing is a really important issue, mainly for what I was talking about in the last question, which is inclusion. I think, right now, we have two projects that are currently moving forward. One of them is a senior housing element that includes affordable housing, and these are the types of projects that are great. However, in terms of San Anselmo as a town, we're pretty much built out. Beyond these projects, there's not a lot of opportunity, and we really got to get creative. I think doing things like annexing second units, exploring certain zoning and planning laws would be beneficial, but ultimately, we're going to have to get creative. I'm not necessarily sure that I agree with the association of Bay Area governments and their top-down model of how they prescribe housing. I get why they do it, but I think if we're going to continue to keep up with the RENA allocations, we're going to need to be really creative in how we do that. And that's why I want to run for town council, is because I think I have some creative ideas that we could bring to the town council and address affordable housing.
Thank you. Ford?
Affordable housing presents a really difficult issue, and that's the tension that exists between private property rights and access to housing by people who need financial help in doing so. I have some personal knowledge about this because even though I own property, I rent units to section eight tenants, and that's one way of dealing with affordable housing. So I put my money where my mouth is. The state requires each municipality to have a certain number of affordable units. Those numbers come down, as Steve mentioned, from a Bay Area organization that doesn't really pay very much attention to us, but we still have to do what it, we have to try to meet the goals that it sets for us. And San Anselmo's doing a pretty decent job. We have a new place for seniors that's going in over by the back of the old Ray Dean's ice rink, which is the shoe store now on Lincoln Avenue. And then there's also an approved apartment building across from me at 754 Sir Francis Drake that's going to go in. And then also, second units are important. And second units are important because both, they can provide cheaper access to people to live here and also can provide money so people who live here can stay here.
Thank you. The next question will be Kim answering first. In Marin, approximately 30% of residents are over 60 years of age. What specific actions will you put in place to ensure that the needs of older adults in your city are addressed?
Well, I just had a birthday, and I turned 63, so I think that might be me, which is all the more reason why I could be a great town councilwoman, right? I think I said earlier that one of my priorities was to make sure that youth, underrepresented, and older adults were a priority, and so that would include me. Some of the things that I have concerns is that people tend to put people like me out to pasture or think we're going to play mahjong, but we are actually a part of a bigger fabric, and frankly, I consider myself a weaver. We need you. We need people like me. So I want to get you involved in this room, in the conversation, engaging with the young people and the underrepresented. And I'm not entirely certain about what that's going to be, but I have some ideas that are percolating, and I'd like to solicit your help right now.
Thank you. Steve?
Yeah, as a member of the Parks and Recreation Commission, our recreation department in town offers an array of programs, and I think one of the things that we could really look into is how to better serve the elder members of our community. As I mentioned earlier, Age Friendly Marin is currently doing a survey to assess activity levels, kind of what the level of engagement is of the elders in our community. I think that's going to be a really big jumping-off point. This is an issue that's really near and dear to my heart because I have a 92-year-old grandmother who, her social network has diminished because she's basically outlived all of her friends and most of her family. This is a situation that many elders are in, and it becomes a really serious quality of life issue because when you become less engaged, your senses will dull, your sense of community will dull, and we want to keep that sharp for the members of our community. Again, being a community here that I think is, when I think about San Anselmo, I think of an inclusive community. This is an area where we could really seek the input of our elders to provide better programming to keep them engaged. Thank you.
Thank you. Ford?
I'm 66. I think the most important thing first is, it ties in with my response to the prior question, is providing a situation that supports older people being able to stay here. I mean, some of the assumptions are, I mean, the reality is, as you get older, unless you're really, really wealthy, your ability to make money diminishes, and so this is a very tony place increasingly to live in. I've grown up in Marin all my life. I've seen what the changes are. So second units really help that. And in addition, second units bring another person into the house, and I agree with Steve. The more engagement, the better, the older you get, certainly the older that I get. Another thing is transportation. When, like before my mom died, she lost her ability to drive. The independence that comes with the ability to drive is a big deal. And so the Marin Transit Authority, which is a component or related to the Transportation Authority of Marin, that I used to be a member of that board, has services that go from house to house that pick older people up and take them to do their errands. In addition, I think mahjong is a big deal, and it provides a lot of activities for older people, as does the men's singing group, and the more that people can do together and get out and engage, the better.
Thank you. Tom?
Thank you. I ran, two years ago in 2017, I had several ideas. I just, by recall, listed a few. I can put all of them back on my website tonight if you'd like to see it later on tonight, or tomorrow, if better. But the previous question was about affordable housing. I don't support the affordable housing because I think housing's a San Francisco issue, but I would support senior housing here, similar to the Redwoods in Mill Valley. I think that's an excellent facility. I would also expand connecting with all our residents, including seniors, and this is just simply getting contact information for emergency information in case of fire or floods, phone numbers, emails, et cetera. I would also support free water delivery to our seniors on hot days. I think we can do that. I would also look into fraud and elder abuse. I would also look into fraud and elder abuse. I would have our caregivers registered on an annual basis. Many of our seniors have caregivers who are not family members, and I think they should be registered with our town. Thank you.
Thank you. The next question will be answered by Steve first. San Anselmo has experienced serious flooding in the past. What solutions do you see to be the most effective?
Sure. Thank you. I believe the project going on in San Anselmo Ave is a great start. The construction will begin next summer on that project. That will be something that will help alleviate flooding in town. I get the sense, though, that since this project has been moving forward, people feel like, oh, well, okay, we're good on flooding. We are not good on flooding. You know, most of the recent actions and efforts have been focused on the 50- or the 100-year flood event. I completely support those efforts. However, there are things we could do as a community to address smaller flood events, like Community Creek Side Abatement Days, where we get together with property owners and business owners, and we get in the creek, we get our hands dirty, and we start cleaning out some brush and clearing the arteries. I think that's something that's really important, and I think it's really indicative of the type of community we are. I know property owners will participate in this. I know business owners would love to participate in this, and this is the type of community we are, and this is the type of efforts we need to take. Thank you.
Thank you. Ford?
The initial problem with flooding is that San Anselmo originally was constructed along a flood plain. We're in the middle of a flood plain now. To try to think that you can best Mother Nature and stop flooding when you live in the middle of a flood plain is a foolish assumption. What you can do is make things better. But even with making things better, there are cross-currents and tensions. For example, where the Le Parte restaurant was, it's going to be eliminated. That whole building's going to be taken out. A lot of bridges are going to be replaced. That's great for downtown San Anselmo because the water from Le Parte used to, when it got too high, would spill over and go down San Anselmo Avenue. But when you increase the bore and you increase the volume of what's going to go down the creek, you've got big problems with the downstream people. So there's a tension there. And also, another big problem is that any time you have a drain, it's the volume of the drain that counts. Our drain for flooding is the concrete ditch and Ross. That concrete ditch is too small. The Army Corps screwed up when they designed it because they designed it assuming pure water, not water laden with sediment like the way it is when it comes down out of the hills. And so that's a huge problem that we have to deal with here, and so there's no easy answer to flooding.
Thank you. Tom?
Thank you. This is a question that really should involve experts, hydroelectric engineers. To my knowledge, none of us here are that. I don't accept the flood. That's my initial take on it. I think we need international experts. We're living in the 21st century. We can do, you know, go-to meetings. We can do all kinds of conferences, webinars, et cetera. We don't have to physically travel anywhere. It's a smaller world. And there are low-lying countries like Japan and the Netherlands who have done tremendous things with their own flooding issues. I don't know if it's going to solve the issue, but it will severely mitigate it, and I think we should incorporate that in our planning. Also, when I ran last, two years ago, 2017, the very first thing I did is, I live just down the street here, I walked up and down the street talking to merchants about their concerns. Several of them told me they don't know what to do in an emergency, in a flood. And so we need better planning, at least specifically for our downtown merchants, in terms of what the actual plan is in emergency, is like a flood. Thank you.
Thank you. Kim?
I agree with all of my colleagues here to my right. I think that there are a number of things that we can do, and then there are many things that we cannot. We cannot control climate change and when a potential flood might show up. However, the infrastructure that we have in town needs to be improved continually. At my house on Medway, the front of it, I call it Lake Medway, and no matter how, like, that's what I call it, no matter how much has been done to improve the street, the water still comes down and hangs out in front of my house. I also agree with Steve on abatement. We just have to be more vigilant around, making sure that we're constantly keeping the plant life in control. But I also really want us to have a better type of communication that gets around to our neighborhood, so that people understand what's required, if we need to evacuate, and ways to educate people. And that's pretty much it. I think we've summed it up here as a foursome.
Good. Thank you. The next question will be answered by Ford first. Do you support Measure M, which provides funding for the restoration of 93-year-old Memorial Park?
No. I don't support Measure M, which is not to say that I think that Memorial Park doesn't need assistance. What I do think is that it doesn't need $8 million worth of assistance. What the major difficulty is with Memorial Park is the field. The fields have lousy drainage and lousy irrigation. That's what needs to be fixed. That would cost about $1 million, not 8 million. And that also goes into the availability of money tax-wise by citizens. Citizens only have a certain tolerance for being taxed. And so we have to decide, what are our priorities? And how much do we value them, and what are we going to pay for? And right now, I think our priorities have to do with fire prevention and fire protection. There is something that you all will be asked to vote on next March that has to do with fire prevention, which really means vegetation management or pruning. That's going to be $21 million a year. So what's more important? $8 million to gussy up a park that you can do for a million bucks, or saving your shekels, saving your money to pay for better fire protection? So it's a difficult question. The park needs help, but it doesn't need 8 million bucks worth.
Thank you. Tom?
Thank you. I have much to say on Measure M. I hope I get through it in 90 seconds here. First, my position is no, a very strong no on Measure M. And I'll be very specific. Measure M is a great illustration of why we need more democracy in our local town. It aligns nicely with one of my ideas on election reform. I think ballot measures for special taxes and fees should require a minimum voter turnout, 51%. Although this special tax does require at least a 2/3 vote to pass, there are no requirements on voter turnout percentages. That is, if we only have a very low, say, 20% voter turnout, very likely in this last pure election. I say that because it's, we're going to correspond to presidential year elections. This means that Measure M could pass with only about 1,300 votes in a town of 13,000. Here are some other reasons not to vote no on Measure M. It's too expensive, and not just for home and property owners. Owner costs will be passed on to renters, like Steve and I, making it even more difficult for many of our lower-income residents to afford to live here. It's $3,000 it's going to cost over 3,000. The rent's going to increase $3,000 over 30 years. The town has not secured enough pre-project, pre-construction funding for Measure M. I think all special tax fee measures should have at least 50% funding already secured by the town before any work is to be done. The final price tag for 30-year government project will most likely be higher than the current total. And I don't understand why the cost includes upkeep. I understand the renovation part, but general upkeep should be in the general annual operating budget. In addition, it's too long a tax period duration. I'm seeing the stop sign.
Thank you.
The rest is on my website. Thank you.
Thank you. Kim?
The Measure M initiative is on the ballot, and I think that democracy is going to work this coming November the 5th. I am an advocate for Measure M, and I do know that there are many people on the other side of the aisle who I'm friends with, and I want to honor them. But what I actually think would be a novel idea is that rather than have two retail cannabis stores, that the applicants for those stores actually arrange development agreements that fund Memorial Park and fund Millennial Playground. And so I'm thinking of creative ways to pay for that, and I think cannabis might be the route.
Thank you. Steve?
So essentially, this question is, how are we going to individually vote on this? Because ultimately, it'll be the people of San Anselmo that are making this decision. I'm voting yes. I have been engaged with this project since the beginning, and I'm voting yes because of three primary reasons. Obviously, the drainage and irrigation, nobody disputes that. Certainly, public safety and the safety of our park. But for me, it's really about the access. As I said before, when I think of San Anselmo, I think about a community of inclusion. And having a park that is able to serve all of our populations for years to come is something that's very important to me. That's why I support it. But I think this issue highlights the bigger problem that we experience here, which is the problem of how local governments are forced to fund the most important projects in their communities. Because of Prop 13, you know, we have to always go to the ballot. I think we need stronger statewide action, particularly an exemption of corporations, big corporations, from Prop 13 to help fund our schools, to help fund these capital improvement projects that are so, so necessary. Until that happens, we're going to be right here again. This will not be the last measure you see. But I'm voting yes because, again, drainage and irrigation, the safety of the park, and access for everybody in our community for years to come. Thank you.
Thank you. The next question will be answered by Tom first. How do you stand on approving storefront access to legal marijuana in San Anselmo, considering that San Anselmo residents voted overwhelmingly to approve Prop 64 in 2016?
Right. Thank you. This is a great illustration of how I will always put the town above my own interest. On a personal basis, I think all drugs should be both legalized and decriminalized. Certainly, I think we should have controlled substances. I don't want nine-year-olds going to CVS to buy ether. But Steve mentioned something on the last debate, and I agree with. He was talking about the wording of Prop 64, and I think a lot of the people voted for the decriminalization aspect, and that's important. And so, you know, as far as medicinal marijuana, I support a storefront here, just not downtown. As far as recreational, I am against it. I'm against it because I don't think it fits in with the character of the town. I would be very curious to see a breakdown of the vote in terms of how parents in San Anselmo voted, and how they would vote. And again, my entire campaign is based on democracy and voter referendum issues. I would do that first. I would really get a sense, a good sense, from all of us of how we really stand, parents, non-parents, et cetera. If the town is for it, then certainly I would agree, but on a personal basis, I'm against recreational marijuana.
Thank you. Kim?
I am not an advocate of having two or any retail stores that sell cannabis in town. I am okay with adult use of it, and certainly for medicinal purposes. I'm going to echo Steve, which is, the small-town character of San Anselmo is something that has been drummed into me as a former planning commissioner, and it's just not suitable. And every time we try to find a way to be okay with it, it seems to be that we walk back. There is not any proof that there's going to be a big windfall. In fact, I'm not sure people even know how much money we could potentially make. The other day, at a planning commission meeting, one of the operators projected $5 million in gross revenue, but the town would receive something like $500,000. I'm not certain what that's going to get us. That's certainly not going to get us a rainy day fund, and maybe two firefighters. But even more importantly is the cost to our community from a social position. I'm gravely concerned about young children, my daughter who has fake ID. Their modeling behavior that is unbecoming to someone like me and maybe someone like you. I think that there are many opportunities to have access to it, and you can get it on Amazon, or probably go to Fairfax or San Rafael. So no on retail cannabis here.
Thank you. Steve?
So this response will give you a snapshot into my style of governance here, which is heavily based on listening. I have no issues with anybody who consumes marijuana. I understand the medical needs for it. And if we didn't have an access, if we had an access issue here in San Anselmo, maybe it'd be a different story. But we don't have an access issue. You could get it via delivery. There are medical dispensaries all throughout the North Bay here. And, you know, I've been talking to voters about this issue for the last two years, and our community is overwhelmingly opposed to this issue. If you show me any small town in America like San Anselmo where a business comes into that community and doesn't have the support of the community, that business is not going to succeed long-term. And we need businesses that can succeed long-term in San Anselmo. Again, to specifically answer the question, I do believe that when the voters in San Anselmo voted in 2016 on Prop 64, that they were voting for the decriminalization. They were voting for releasing low-level offenders out of our state prisons that are causing us money. I don't believe they were voting to allow a recreational dispensary in our community. Therefore, I'm a no on recreational cannabis in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Ford?
The language of Proposition 64 that all of us voted on did two things. Wasn't a lot of language. One, it said that the recreational use of marijuana by adults was legal. Two, it authorized specifically the sales of marijuana. The sales. And so here in San Anselmo, more than 75% of the voters voted to approve Prop 64. So there is, in Marin County, a great timidity by elected public officials to take the step of making cannabis available to people who want to use it recreationally. That's because it's new. Anything that's new tends to be a little bit scary. Small-town character does not, in my book, translate into the morals police. Cannabis dispensaries are lucrative. If there's one here, it's not going to wither on the vine. It's going to be very, very vital. And the people that I share this platform with acknowledge that money will be produced, and that money that is produced, whether it's $500,000 or $1 million, we need it. Our town budget is operating at a $200,000-a-year deficit right now, and is projected to do that for at least the next five years.
Thank you. The next question will be answered by Kim first. What is your stance on the installation of 5G antennas in town and on private residences?
I know that we love technology, and I certainly want, I want to upload something fast and be able to use a lot of data. But I would like to say that the infrastructure might be needed for the future for many of the things we want to do, communication, but I would like to take a little bit of time to understand the implications, particularly from a health and wellness point of view. And also, I'm not certain how much the infrastructure is going to cost us. So that's my position right now. I'd like to sort of see more of it being implemented before we take a position.
Okay. Steve?
I think getting the 5G network up and running is something that's really important, particularly to public safety agencies. You know, especially as we're going to, you know, this planned power shutdown, the new brave world that we live in, making sure that particularly our safety net networks for public service providers in times of emergency are up and running. 5G is a big part of that. However, there are personal property rights, and we need to respect those. I believe that any projects moving forward with regards to 5G installation would need to be a collaborative effort between property owners, the town, and the entity providing it. Thank you.
Thank you. Ford?
5G involves the emanation of electrical forces that you can't see. And a lot of people react to those. They have adverse health consequences. 5G is the next greatest one. Right now, we're at four. We have a citizen here in San Anselmo that lives across from the bottom of Butterfield, next to the Pentecostal Church, whose towers hide cell towers. next to the Pentecostal Church, whose towers hide cell towers. And the people that live next door have had two miscarriages. 5G is coming down from the federal government to us, saying, "We have very little discretion about whether we say yes or no to 5G towers." 5G presents a huge public health and safety concern. The FCC last performed any kind of valuation about what the impact was of this electronic vibration. There's a particular word of art for them that I can't remember. But the point is that that study is 30 years old, and it doesn't take into consideration what the situation is now. So when there are huge corporations that are making tons of money off of our electronic dependence and want to foist stuff on us that will hurt us, local municipalities should be able to say no, and I do say no.
Thank you. Tom?
Thank you. I agree with Ford entirely on that answer. I remember a few years ago reading about a teenage girl who developed cancer. And the reason she developed cancer is she used to sleep with her cellphone on top of her pajamas. And the cancer was literally the exact shape of the cellphone. You know, our technology is advancing way too rapidly. We're talking about multi-million, if not billion-dollar corporations who put profits way ahead of our health. We need to slow down with 5G. We need much more studies on this, independent studies. And that's my position on that.
Thank you. Kim? Oh, you started.
Kim started.
Right.
Getting late.
You need another crack at it. So Steve will get the next question.
Sure.
What meaningful actions would you take as a council member to mitigate climate change, such as emissions, waste, et cetera, locally?
Well, I'm proud to say that we reside in a town that has been a true leader on the environment. And so I think when you talk about what we can do more, I think it's continue to lead. I think it's continue to look for additional places for solar installation. And I think it's about, really, where we can make the most bang for the buck is by improving our public transportation, getting people out of their cars. I work in Contra Costa County. If there's a day where I need to bring my car to the shop or I don't have my car, I have to take the most off-the-beaten-trail route to get to work. I have to take the 24 to San Francisco. I have to take the BART from San Francisco to North Concord Martinez Station and then lift to my office. One simple change that would make that so much easier would be to connect the 23 with the 40 and 42 buses at the San Rafael Transit Hub. Right now, they operate on completely off schedules. That would be a huge thing to get a lot of our residents here who are commuting to the East Bay out of their cars. I think that's a great area for us to improve. Thank you.
Thank you.
San Anselmo has taken a number of actions that are directed at climate change. We were the first, actually, under my leadership and push, we were the first community in Marin County to ban single-use plastics. And that's one of the reasons why I received an early endorsement from the Sierra Club. In addition, we have a climate action plan here in San Anselmo that requires our town to start to use electric vehicles. We're doing that. And also, while not so effective, but more symbolic, under my leadership, we adopted a resolution approving and in support of the Green New Deal. Climate change is very scary, and there's a lot of misinformation about it. Issues came up a couple of nights ago when we were addressing this proposed vegetation management, joint powers, creation of a joint powers authority and tax that's going to come up next March. And there were people that were saying, "Yes, but you're dealing with the symptoms by dealing with fire suppression. You're not dealing enough with the causes." And really, what the largest cause in Marin is the self-indulgence all of us have and reliance on our automobiles. The plastics go in the bay. Everything gets trashed. If we walked, if we biked, if we had better public transportation, we'd be doing something much more effective and realistic.
Thank you. Tom?
Thank you. Climate change is really one part of a larger issue, and that is just to get chemicals and pollutants out of our environment. We live in a very chemical-laden world. I think we would all live quite healthily to at least 100 or 110 without the chemicals in our world. It's really incredible how we're being poisoned in our food, our water, and our air. I would work to ban GMOs, smoking, and fluoride in our water. I take the bus every day. I would urge more residents to commute that way as well. I would also promote electric car usage and charging stations. Although, I would see if we have any residents who are connected with Tesla on a higher executive level because the price is just too high. If they lowered their price, more people would drive electric cars. And that's what we need. Thank you.
Thank you. Kim?
I think that some of the issues on climate change and how we can be effective have actually been presented by my peers to the right. One of the main things that I'd like to do to address climate change is to focus on transit-oriented development, which means some housing initiatives that are conducive for people not to be driving. Much like Tom, I work in the city. I take the shuttle to the ferry, and then I take the ferry to the city. We need more modes of transportation and more coordinated modes of transportation. In addition to that, actually, climate change is something, we don't know all the ramifications yet because it's sort of an ongoing thing. And the more we can become educated about climate change and how it affects us on a local level would be important. And I think that that comes from leadership here on the council, leadership in the town with our town manager, and making sure we have coalitions with other jurisdictions and state and national platforms. Thank you.
Thank you. The next question will be answered by Ford first. What are your thoughts about the city budget?
Well, that's a recurrent theme. Well, I have a number of thoughts. Our town is really well-run. We have a great staff. We have great leadership. We have a great finance director, Helen Scott U., who's here tonight, along with Dave Donery, our town manager. But there's only so much that we can do. There's only so much money we get. And there are problems with unfunded pension liabilities that are ever increasing and are eating up our general fund and our reserves. So management of money is probably one of the most difficult things we do, aside from dealing with appeals of planning applications where one neighbor's construction is taking away another neighbor's view. So to go back again, we have a limited pot of money. We have our budget now operating at a $200,000-a-year deficit, and that is anticipated to go on for some period of time and get worse. So we really need the help of labor in terms of reducing pensions. We need the help of people being open to a cannabis dispensary so we can augment the money that comes into our coffers.
Thank you. Tom?
Thank you. I would also work on pension reform and benefits. They're getting out of control. It's, right now, we're spending astronomical amounts compared to just five or 10 years ago. And this is not just San Anselmo. Of course, it's statewide, if not US-wide. I think our top-salaried employees can take a 10% pay cut. I think that's feasible. I'm also concerned that 75% of our revenues come from property taxes. I would work on expanding our downtown merchant base and sales tax revenues. I would do that by actively promoting select chain stores. By select, I certainly don't mean McDonald's or Burger King. What I mean is a Microsoft or an Apple store, I think, would be tremendous here. We're 20 feet away from our main downtown, and there are no teenagers there, no pre-teens, nothing. And it's not because of the hour. It's because they have nowhere to go. The only time I see them is where I go. You know, we talked about affordable housing, and there's also affordable dining. It's not that common for teenagers to go anywhere casual except Stefano's Pizza. I'd like to get more, I'd like to get some select chain stores anchoring our downtown all the way from Bolinas to the other side and really expand our sales base. Thank you.
Thank you. Kim?
I have to pose a question. If we have a $200,000 deficit, how that came to be? Because I don't really know. So one of the main things that I would like to address is that having retail cannabis stores is not going to be the panacea. And one of the priorities for me is to actually recruit and engage with potential business opportunities that are aligned with our values. I think it's important that we are all fiscally responsible, and I would say I'm going to give a nod to Dave and his predecessor for that. But we also want to make sure that we have a robust revenue stream and a big, healthy rainy fund. We have to honor our pension agreements. And yes, I agree that they are kind of a hardship on a lot of places, including San Anselmo and state and other regions. But I want to serve on the council so that I can create new opportunities and make a more robust business community here. I want to be an economic ambassador. I'd love to have a maker's store or a cooking store where people can come and be engaged, not a cannabis retail store.
Thank you. Steve?
Yeah, so fiscal stewardship is a top priority of mine. And if you were wondering about that, I've been endorsed by Mayor Matt Brown, who is the fiscal steward on the town council. To answer Kim's question, I believe the reason that we are in a running deficit for the next five or so years is because of our pension liability and just the average costs associating with operating a small local government with fixed revenues. You know, the town is recently engaged in a process where they're trying to share services better. The Recreation Department used to get off on the hook of having the town administrative offices pay for some of their stuff. Now they're having to start to foot the bill for those. Those are the things that we're doing in Contra Costa County, too. All local governments are in this. Again, it's how we fund our local governments that needs to be addressed. However, one thing that we can do, short of changing Prop 13, would be to attract diverse and engaging businesses to our community. The new rooftop restaurant here on San Anselmo Avenue will be awesome. I believe it'll have a similar effect that Pizzalina did at Red Hill Plaza. If you remember Red Hill Plaza about 10 years ago, there wasn't a lot of action up there. Once Pizzalina, the yogurt place, a few other businesses came in there, it made it very, very lively, and now it's a place to go. So I think those are things that we could do here in San Anselmo. But again, it gets back to that number-one problem of how local governments are forced to fund the most important things they need to do. Thank you.
Thank you. And now the final question of the evening. And it will be answered by Tom first. How does your volunteer experience lend itself to being a town council member? What town committees have you actually participated in to prepare for this role?
Well, the second question, none. The first question, I've been involved in the charity world for about three decades. I'm the founder and president of the only charity in history that offers donors a money-back guarantee. I have a real focus on philanthropy as well as a corporate focus on efficiency. It's a good balance there, and donors liked it. The organization itself was tremendously well-received. In terms of volunteer, well, on a personal level, I was headed to grad school when my mother had a stroke, and I went home to Boston to take care of her for about three years. I didn't look at that as volunteering or any pro bono aspect, as a lawyer might say. But I just did it. I mean, that's what you do as a son, as a decent person, decent human being. My sister got cancer about five or seven years ago. I helped her a little bit as well. So, you know, I don't look at volunteering as a resume builder. It's just part of who I am. Thank you.
Thank you. Kim?
I volunteer often. Most recently, I was running the pie booth here at the country fair, and I took up the baton from Kay Coleman. And in her past, she always had homemade pies, and then she got too busy and she got donated pies. And I brought back all the homemade pies. So anyway, we've got some great talent here. Also, I'm not certain if being a planning commissioner is a volunteer position, but I certainly didn't get paid. So I consider that a volunteer. But I'm pretty passionate about one group that I am on the board. It's called Cinnamon Girls. It's in Oakland, and it's a mentorship program for girls of color and underrepresented economically. And you serve as a mentor for them, starting in middle school until they graduate. And also, I'm an IDEA consultant, which is, the acronym stands for Inclusion, Diversity, Equity, Advocacy. And I spend time over at the Haas School of Business, working with students who are interested in the commercial real estate business, doing mentorship, helping with career development. And I'm pretty certain I'll be on the Halloween Volunteer Committee here shortly. So thank you.
Thank you. Steve?
Yes, thank you for the question. For more than a decade, I've been volunteering and providing service to the town. I've been on the Parks and Recreation Commission since 2012. I've served on the Community Facilities Master Plan Advisory Committee. I currently serve on the Memorial Park Master Plan Advisory Board. I've also served on the Memorial Skate Park Steering Committee, which helped bring the skate park to Memorial Park to give our kids a meaningful place to play. I've emceed the town Easter egg hunt and picnics on the plaza. I've baked pies for Kim's pie booth. I coached football at San Rafael High. And I sit on the board of two organizations, Advocates for Child Empowerment and Safety, which looks out for children that have been lost in the court system, and the Center for Judicial Excellence. Thank you.
Thank you. Ford?
On the local level, public service is all about volunteering. And it's largely a thankless job. Sometimes you get paid a little bit. Like being a town council member, I get paid $277.05 a month. But what I do is spend a lot of time and give a lot of time and care and attention and thought. And the reason is, is because I've lived here all my life and I care about where I live. And I like to put my money where my mouth is. So among the areas where I volunteer, as I said before, is Marin Clean Energy. That takes a lot of time. I sit on its executive committee. That takes more time. There are meetings that are attended at. There's preparation for meetings. There's discussion in meetings. And so what you do is, what I do, is I listen, and then I lead. And I lead by taking a position, by telling people what I think, why I think, and being open to criticism and changing my mind if I get convinced that I'm wrong. I also volunteer by spending time on the Board of Directors of the Fire Board. I've talked about that before. I also volunteer by sitting on the Board of Directors of the Marin Telecommunications Agency, the very agency that's going to be responsible for putting this on TV. Also, on the County Homeless Committee and our Local Finance Committee. So volunteering is about giving of yourself, giving of your brains and intelligence, and doing your best and being open.
Thank you. And that concludes the question portion of the forum. Before the candidates make their closing statements, here's some useful information about the election. Election Day is Tuesday, November 5. If you wish to register to vote, or if you've moved since the last time you voted and need to re-register, you may register online up until October 21. Registration forms mailed to the county elections department must be postmarked no later than October 21. Vote-by-mail requests must be received no later than October 29. If you go to the League of Women's Voter Edge website, that's V-O-T-E-R-S-E-D-G-E.org/CA, to see your own ballot, enter your street address and zip code. You can also see the entire county by clicking on Look Up Ballots by County and enter Marin. You will see links to the candidates, to issues, ballot measures, and information about voting process itself. It's a terrific tool. It's a terrific tool in helping you make sure you have your voting plan in place for this election. Now the candidates will be making closing statement of two minutes. We'll go in the reverse order from the opening statements and start with Kim.
Well, again, I want to thank everybody for being here, and I also want to thank the League of Women Voters for all the work that you've done for a very long time. As the lone female up here representing the cause, I want to make sure to stand up for all of us and all the work we've done. This is a really special moment for me. I am a neophyte. I've never run for a position of this type. My colleagues to the right are all practitioners, and so I want to make sure that everybody knows that I'm maybe not quite as shiny. But all that aside, I love San Anselmo. I could have lived anywhere else in Marin or anywhere else in the world, but I happened to accidentally fall into this place, and I thought, "This feels like home to me." I could click my heels and wear some shiny red shoes. I'm running for town council to bring new, fresh voice to the group. I want to make sure that I am inclusive. I want to make sure that we have a great place where we can live, work, and play. And it's a call to action that every one of us is a part of the fabric of the town. I want us to keep our hearts and minds on our future. There's a lot of young people here who need us to stand up for them and show up. We are capable, and we are truly blessed and fortunate to live in one of the greatest places on earth. And my goal is that we are always paying attention to the underrepresented, the less fortunate, and that we don't leave anyone behind. Thank you.
Thank you. Tom?
Thank you. Thank you all for coming tonight. We all appreciate it. This will be my last campaign for local office. With my current platform ideas, I've done all there is I can do. I presented you all with a blueprint, a comprehensive and concise plan to improve our town and our government, to strengthen and expand democracy. It's important to note that all of my ideas are just that, my ideas. I will not introduce any legislation unless I know via the voter referendum process that the majority of our citizens support my doing so. Likewise, I believe that all ballot measures should require a 51% voter turnout in order to pass. I'd like to close by giving a quick overview of I Revolution in Seven Steps, A Blueprint for Enhanced Democracy Right Here in San Anselmo. My website, tomking2019.com, details everything further. Step one, make the town council a paid, full-time job with the council serving one term only. I mentioned that in my opening statement. I think that is absolutely critical. With this change, we can all apply for the job. No more reelections. Step two, mandatory voting with a binding "none of the above" option. We will last find out that we have many San Anselmos, not just one. Step three, lower the voting age to 16. We all talk about our kids, but, you know, how are they going to get involved in politics unless they get involved in politics? We let them drive, but why not vote? Step four, voter referendum process. We all decide. Let's bring our political system into the 21st century. Step five, no GMOs, smoking, or fluoride in our water. A government that doesn't focus squarely on the health of its citizens is no government at all. Step six, a new library, community center, and movie theater. Much-needed and long-overdue improvements to our downtown, the movie theater especially. Step seven, election reform. One of the key things there for election reform, the moderator just mentioned the date of the election is in one month. But the voter, but 80% of our populace votes by mail, and they just got those one full month prior to the election. I would change that. I think election, I think the vote by mail should start on Election Day. There's no rush to count the votes. Thank you again for your thoughtful consideration, and thank you for your vote.
Thank you. Ford?
I'm going to use my time to try to clean up some things that I had wanted to address, but as you can see, the time constraints make communicating challenging. First off, with respect to the criticism from Mr. King at the outset that I somehow was anti-democratic by participating in an appointment process, what he knows better, and he didn't mention, is that I was the sole dissenting vote on the town council. I said, "We should have an election this fall, and Kay's seat ought to be filled then." I stood alone and didn't win. So that doesn't mean you take your marbles and you go away and you don't play. That means you take the next step and you participate. And in my participation, I'm very proud of, of having made efforts that resulted in having a very bright 25-year-old woman be on our board. 25 years old is the important part, because it's her generation and those following that are going to be taking the heat with respect to climate change and, and climate chaos, and they ought to be in a position of authority in making decisions. So that's really what's, what's going on with respect to that. Since I, I've got two minutes, that's right. Then I also want to talk about, so I'm endorsed by the Firefighters Union 1775. And the reason is, is because I advocate for fire safety and for fire, fire, firefighter safety. I'm also endorsed by the Marin Realtors, and that's because I know what the balance is between private property rights and, and more charitable approaches. Finally, I want to congratulate candidate Burdo for having received every endorsement available in this race, including the IJ today. He is the sole person the IJ endorsed. They didn't endorse me, but what they did do is go through a long list of my effectiveness, and just because I may, controversy may follow me, and I may be confrontational, doesn't mean I don't do a good job. And so I take the IJ's non-endorsement as a great big endorsement.
Thank you. Steve?
Well, thank you, Ford. That was a, a great segue into my closing here. And thank you all for being here tonight. Everybody listening at home, thank you to the League. Thank you to my fellow candidates. When the town council filled the open seat this past summer, they rightfully focused on the gender void. I believe that's important. What they did not focus on was the spirit of San Anselmo that Kay Coleman brought to the council. All of the years of volunteering, leading the parade, emceeing the, the picnics and the Easter egg hunt, those are all things that I've done. I listed in the last question my extensive service to our town, and I would look forward to bringing that to the town council. Because of that, that more than a decade's worth of service and the relationships I've built along the way, I've amassed a great, broad, and diverse list of endorsements, including Mayor Matt Brown, former mayors, Paul Chignell, Carla Overberger, Tom McInerney, former council member Doug Kelly, the entire San Anselmo Parks and Recreation Commission, members of our planning commission, Supervisor Katie Rice, scores of parent leaders, elder leaders, just leaders in our community. Now, get ready, because I'm going to name all of those organizations. I have been endorsed by every single organization in this race, and I'm extremely proud of that. Those endorsements include the Marin County Firefighters, the Sierra Club, the Marin Women's PAC, the Marin County Young Democrats, the Marin Association of Realtors, the North Bay Labor Council, our transportation workers with the Teamsters, and I am the only candidate endorsed by the Marin Independent Journal and the Marin Democratic Party. I've said it before, this race isn't about me. It's not about any of these candidates. It's not about you. This is what we can, this is about what we can do together to keep San Anselmo vibrant, family-friendly, and safe. I would love your support. I would relish your vote, and I look forward to working together on the community we love. Thank you.
Thank you. This concludes our forum. Thank you to CMCM for broadcasting this event. It will be broadcast on Channel 30 and posted on YouTube. The YouTube link will be available at MarinLWV.org. Thank you to the town of San Anselmo for making this space available. Thanks to the candidates for participating, to Nancy Bell for question sorting, and Lisa Bennett for timekeeping. And thank you for joining us tonight, and most importantly, for voting. Thank you. [applause][1773.83]